I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Thank you. Chair moves for approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Announcements. September seventeenth, facilities committee meeting, seven o'clock a.m., right here. September eighteenth, legal women boarder school board candidate form at seven p.m. in the Gillespie Center. October fifteenth, facilities committee meeting at seven a.m., right here in this room. October twentieth, finance committee meeting at seven thirty. And October twentieth, policy committee meeting at five p.m. in the conference room, followed by the regular board meeting. Do we have any members of the public that would still address the board? If not, we'll move on to the student rep report. Edie and George, come on up.
Great.
Take a minute and introduce yourselves if you would please.
Sure, sure. Alright, I'm Edie Hollenstein. You can kind of find me anywhere at the high school. I play lacrosse and soccer. I'm also on the dance team. I'm involved in DECA, NHS, and also as part of the Passion for Your Project. So yeah, I just love getting involved, love being here and love the community.
Yeah, I'm George Pettit. I'm not quite as involved as Edie, I guess. It's kind of hard to call it after that. I'm the other co-president, I guess. I'm on the Minnesota Association of Honor Society Board as the vice president. I am the president of NHS, I guess, and then I'm just involved in like math and science a little bit, I guess. Not quite as fully. I guess I'm running a marathon.
Yep, alright.
Just doing those sort of things.
Well, welcome you guys, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, well, like we said, we are the co-presidents of the student body at West Taca High School. We lead with Vice President Suzie Mark, Treasurer August Lang, Communications Officer Valima Melboggi, and Secretary, I guess Secretary is August Lang and Treasurer is Edie. Right now, we are planning homecoming, really fun. We're pushing back a little bit this year, so the dance is going to be October fourth instead. We usually have it a little bit earlier, but we're excited to have it a little bit later to have more time to plan it this year. The game, the pep fest, the alumni breakfast, and the carnival are all on October third, the following Friday. And then the dance will be on Saturday, October fourth, from eight thirty to ten thirty.
Perfect. And then on top of that, Student Senate is working through the tribute flags for September eleventh. We'll be putting them outside in the normal places, working around the construction, which is super nice, you know, tribute to the people that deserve it. The Unified Club is also meeting next Wednesday to have their first meeting, just go over all that Unified stuff, another amazing club that we have here. National Honor Society is meeting in the next two days. We have a lot of big things planned, planned to elevate the school, I guess. There we go, that's what we're going with. And then Link Crew also worked recently to help introduce the eighth graders into the school like they always do, help with orientation, class start, and then also meet the teacher night. So always put in the work and help it out, get those eighth graders into school.
Yeah, and moving on to some athletics. Our football team has suffered a couple losses to start off their season unfortunately, but they're looking to come back this Friday here at Adorff. Girls' swimming started the year super strong. They actually did set a new school record at the Tim Dallin Invitational. The West Taca Cross Country team has picked off their season with a varsity girls' win, which is also awesome. And boys' soccer has been off to an amazing start with a solid four to one streak, and they did just beat Southwest Christian this past Thursday, which was only back in the summer.
Unfortunately, girls' soccer has not been on its booming win streak. They're still looking for their first win, but tomorrow they play Jordan, so hopefully they can find that. Girls' tennis is playing Litchfield tomorrow, and they had a lot of early success, so good for them. And then volleyball, like every season, is just doing amazing. They have a great volleyball program here, there we go. They're eight and oh right now, and they're playing Rockford tomorrow, so they should be nine and oh. So great start to the season. On top of that, we've had a lot of arts going on. Last year, we had a great one act, so we're looking to step it up again this year. On the third, they were able to meet to discuss the Fall Musical, the one act, and also the Springway. They had additions yesterday for the Fall Musical Chicago. That's where they come in this year, and they also have callbacks tomorrow.
Yeah, and then for the State Fair, KU-12 Fine Arts Competition, Hilltop had twenty-five ribbon winners, four of which were first place. Shirley Hills had thirty ribbon winners, of which three were first place, and Grandview had fifteen ribbon winners, two of which were first place. And then moving on to some academics, the class of 2025 had a graduation rate of ninety-six percent, with the class of twenty-six having an anticipated graduation rate of ninety-seven point seven. And the class of 2025 also had fifty AP Scholars, and the district was recently ranked number one in both math and reading.
On top of that, the U.S. News and World Report ranked WHS, so we're just at, that's awesome. Tenth in public schools, and then additionally, we were the eighteenth best high school. So great stuff going on there. We're really moving up that rank. And on top of that, we've had really good AP test scores this past year, setting all-time records in four AP courses. Special shout-out to AP World History with a ninety-seven percent pass rate. We were in that one, so. AP Government had a pass rate of ninety-three percent, and Biology had a pass rate of eighty-five percent, which are all new school records, which is amazing.
Yeah, and obviously, moving on to some of the big exciting construction stuff going on. We had a lot of new classrooms open to start off the school year, and the spaces have already been receiving super positive feedback from our student bodies, that's awesome. And we have new tables and chairs in the classrooms, which might seem a little anticlimactic, but it's super exciting because now we can adjust more, and it's a lot better for different learning styles, kind of catering to everybody. And I know personally, I really like being able to move tables and chairs, to be able to collaborate with my peers a little bit more. And the classrooms have just become so much more adaptable, which is awesome.
They definitely have. Additionally, we've had the new boards up on the walls. I know they were a little bit difficult for the teachers that first day, but like it was cool to see through the day how the teachers were like slowly progressing through those.
So the teachers are learning too, right?
Yes, the learning's starting to look good.
It's been a very big learning process. And then on top of that, the flex spaces have also been amazing. I think we're calling them the bays. I haven't really been able to go through them yet. I've been a little bit busy. But they have monitors and good desks, I guess, to help collaborate, is what we heard from students.
Yeah.
The only downside we saw was that it was a little cold downstairs this first day. It was like negative thirty degrees.
That's a little chilly.
But it's made it now, so don't fix anything with that. But it's awesome. But yeah, that's all we have today. We appreciate you having us. So yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, they're awesome.
It's really nice, yes.
Yeah, I love the new logo, too.
Next, we'll move on to the construction report.
You must love your spot in following us.
I thought they were going to take care of the apartment.
You didn't pull the crate like that when I pulled in.
That's all, it's your time.
We'll start, I think we'll just touch on, we updated the phasing plan last time we met. And I think at this point, we're still, we're still tracking for sure on that Phase One, the science classroom additions. We're working through with our team. We're getting started on footings and foundations on the administration addition. And so we're just working through some of those few challenges out of the ground again. It's kind of something we've been running into a bit. But we've got good direction now in getting things going underway there. Somebody else wants to talk through on the pictures. So some of the things that you see here in that Phase One, or which is the, the science additions, you'll see more, if you notice, more of the exterior walls are getting framed and sheeted. The roofers are scheduled to be on site this week to start getting that part watertight. The precast slab that you see here in the top right picture, there's a topping that gets poured across that. That's also scheduled to happen to take place. So we feel like we're in a good spot here. I know it looks like there's a lot to do before December, but once we get things closed up, the finishes and we'll start going through that. Just don't see any problems there. As we look at the Phase Two, or some of the areas that turned over, the GUs bars in the common area, and some of the other flexible seating that you can see. I'm glad to hear that the kids enjoy the spaces as they were able to get in. I know when we met last time, we were a couple weeks away from school, and there's always a lot that has to happen in those last week, few weeks to get things cleaned up and turned over. Here's some more finished areas in the math classrooms. Science. Social Studies area.
So there are some math and science classrooms down those interior ones, is that what you mean?
Yeah, back on the first loop. Yep, the first section of that interior core.
Yeah.
And we'll show some of the, what is called Phase Four on the phasing plan. We have some pictures towards the bottom. But probably our next big area is that Phase Three of the administration addition. So last time we were here, we were getting some excavated for the retaining wall. You can see that foundation is in. They're starting to get the rebar in for the actual retaining wall itself. So behind that is where they'll start footings and foundations up against the building and work their way out towards the front of that addition.
Are those the desks that the kids are talking about? They're all on rollers and everything's on rollers? Okay.
Is the concrete drying in the science areas and stuff that they're going to be able to work on?
Yeah, yeah, did I, yeah, I guess we have pictures of that, that you can kind of see in the science rooms. So there's a few science rooms in the corridor that just due to some of the moisture content in the concrete, they were unable to get the floors put in before. Looks like it's working, but the goal is still that you would do that over MDA grade to get those classrooms finished out. You can kind of see on the bottom, that bottom row of pictures, again, it's the area behind the temp enclosure, which is Phase Four, I believe, on the phasing plan. There's a lot of areas there. You can see the mechanical, electrical rough end, the frames up. They're starting to sheet rock and tape in that area. So that's another area that we've talked about, like internal and with our group, that if we can, if there's an opportunity to try to turn some of those spaces over even earlier, if it's a classroom or two, we're going to try to get those back to the district, just to free up some other spaces. Any questions on, on the high school? Yeah, it's exciting to see the spaces come together and start to see some finishes and things turning over. We always talk, the schedule's crazy. We get to have this excitement at the start of school. You're going to get it again in December and February. It kind of just continues to work all through the year, so.
How is, how is it going, working while classes are going on or afterward? I mean, is there, is that working well, the coordination?
Yeah, I think from our perspective anyway, I think there's been a lot of collaboration with the district and getting things aligned. By default, we tend to do a lot of projects where you're kind of interacting and doing renovations or additions while school is in place. So we try to put the, you know, all the pieces and parts in place to make sure it's, it's going to be, there's some inconvenience to it, obviously, but we try to minimize that as best we can and just coordinate. It's great communication and dialogue with the district, just to make sure that if there are issues, that we're trying to get those addressed and rescheduling things as we need to, so. This one too, we could kind of, this one's maybe even. So if we walk through just kind of finished spaces, I know there's a few punch list items that they're trying to get wrapped up. And so this, yeah, this is the finished spaces to the cafeteria. The exterior, the twenty-sixth of September, the permanent rails will be here for that ramp. It sounds like it's a couple-day install, so they're working with the school to coordinate.
So the pictures on the top are the cafeteria. First I had the gym, but that's the cafeteria, okay.
Yep.
And that restroom in there that's got the individual stalls, is that right, Kevin?
The exterior, the entry, and again, the temp rails, till the end of the month.
Is there signage going on?
Yeah, it just went up today.
Oh, cool.
Those walls turned out just so amazing.
The murals.
Yeah, that looks great.
Is that that, that's the old line for the old office area?
Yeah.
The one in the bottom right, you're looking, as you look out at those windows, that is looking out at the whole office windows.
The very bottom.
Oh. It's very inviting.
So we have an open house for this on October first for the community from three thirty to five. And then our ribbon cutting for the tennis courts is at five. And we're, we're going to be thrilled that the rest of the public will be communicating that out and promoting that those people that haven't seen it, that's a great opportunity to see the middle school and see the tennis courts.
So yeah, I think as Jason mentioned, we're just going through some of the punch list items now, working through some of the last, last details. But all the spaces are turned over to us and we're, we're moving ahead.
It really looks different.
Lastly, we have bits for the stadium and the fields, and then the Hilltop Shirley Hills maintenance projects. Or I think the bits for the primaries maintenance goes out into this week.
Yep, and the big day will be the thirtieth of September, and then October seventh for the athletics.
So that'll be coming in then, the October twentieth, one change in your agenda is moving. The October board meeting from October third to the twentieth. That is to align with our bid opening, and so that's the reason why you're going to see just a change of that board.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
We'll move on to teaching learning, huh?
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to try and share some more reviews.
I didn't warn the student reporters not to say there was no teaching.
Yeah. You coached a while. You coached a while.
I'll get over it.
Alright, tonight I just want to start again, this is the time of the year when I come back and share a few results from the state testing on MCAs, and another banner here, and you have the document in front of you that I, we should never take for granted that we have rankings of number one in state in math and reading across the state. And then top ten in eleven of the state assessments, and then you can see number four, number one in state. And we measure that by at least a hundred students in a grade level combining both MCA and the end special ed results. And I love sharing this because it doesn't just happen. I share that every year, but it truly does. It is a representation of our very methodical, our very procedure-oriented way of looking at student data, looking at our curriculum, making sure we go back, even with results like this, that we're analyzing and we're looking at our strengths, we're looking at our gaps, and then we're adjusting every single year. So this is just one way that for our community to see that kids are getting a fine education here. And it's just, it's wonderful to be able to share this.
The other thing I always notice in this is that we probably live in the most competitive area of the state.
Absolutely.
When you, you know, who else is at the top of the list in the pocket, plays that up for it all.
And I love sharing this document with you because it shows you where our neighbors are, that we shouldn't ever take anything for granted. If anything, it makes us stronger to really focus in on the work that we're doing in the classroom. So these are the 2025 results, and again, starting right away next week, I have meetings with building principals, and we start digging into the data. Yeah, we love seeing this, but we dig a little deeper. We figure out these kids that we expected to perform high, which ones did, which ones did not. Where are our strengths, where are the gaps, and then let's get going on adapting, adjusting, anything we need to adjust on the gaps for this year. Now, one thing that you do not see in the results will be the science results. And that, and that is intentional because the science MCA is a new MCA that is currently MCA four. Those results will come out sometime in October. The Department of Ed has not shared with us exactly the date, but when they come out. We'll review those. It'll be a brand-new assessment, and I'd be the first one as the Department of Ed will say, do not compare to the old MCA three. It is a brand-new test based on new academic standards. And then coming up this spring, we'll be ushering in the new MCA four reading test. So again, next year at this time, you'll see math, you'll see science. You will not see reading until probably October. And then in the spring of 2028 will be the new math MCA. So the state is ushering in updated assessments with their updated academic standards. We just keep reporting, we adapt, and we embed these new standards into our curriculum, and we keep it forward. So good results here. The other thing that was released at the end of October, it's called the Minnesota North Star Accountability System, and it's been with us for a number of years. And back when the federal government passed the ESSA, it's down at the bottom, Every Student Succeeds Act, it's the Federal Education Act. Every state had to come up with an accountability system. So ours is called North Star, and it has three parts to it. It's, they call it stages, but it's really three parts. They look at academic achievement, they look at academic progress, which means if a certain percentage of students are proficient on an MCA test, do they continue to be that same percentage or more the next year? And then we talk about graduation rates, and then we talk about consistent attendance. And for West Taca this year, again, with academic achievement, as you can see with our results, we're a top performer in the state, so no problems there. We have made some really nice agreements with graduation rates. And ninety-seven point four percent was the forty graduation rate for North Star Accountability, ninety-six point eight percent for the seven-year graduation rate. This is based on twenty-three, twenty-four data. That's the most recent data that we have. The big one that a lot of people focus on is that consistent attendance number. And what that represents is the percentage of kids that are attending school, at least ninety percent of the school. And that number is at eighty-two point six percent. It's slowly going up every year. And they put that one in there partly to measure what happened after COVID, what was going on during COVID. And that eighty-two point, eighty-two point one percent, that's pretty typical around our neighborhood. But there are still students that we need to get after and support families to say, you need to be here. You're not going to do as well if you're not here at these times. So we know who those students are. We have plans in place. You hear we talk about our MTSS framework that a lot of the trigger that we use to support those kids and figure out why they're not showing up. But for this measurement, that's twenty-three, twenty-four data. I expect that number to be even higher with the twenty-four, twenty-five we have to go next year.
Do you have a number of what's ninety, in terms of school base, is it ninety percent?
Well, we have a hundred sixty-eight school base.
So it's ninety percent of that, okay.
And it makes sense, but you need to be here to learn. So that is the North Star Accountability results for the year. And then again, I just, as students do better than I do, but I'll say my piece on this. Again, wonderful ratings that we get from outside institutions and organizations. So the 2025 school figure ranking, ranked West Taca Public Schools number one traditional high school across Minnesota, number four overall out of four hundred and forty-six Minnesota districts. I mean, that, that is really something. That is really something. That, if anything, I hope for our community and for people that are looking for places to make it your home, that would build some confidence for them that this is a fine place to go to school. And then as you heard from our student reps, the 2025 U.S. News and World Report ranking ranks high schools number ten traditional public high school Minnesota, number eighteen best high school overall in the state. And again, that's just a reflection of what's happening in our classrooms. It's a reflection of how we approach learning. It's a reflection of how we view our business here in the district, and that is fine results for that. Okay, last thing I have. I just want to touch briefly with you. You know, part of the regular work that we do comes through tactics that we use in the district. And as you were working with Kevin, new processes with the board, we currently have our tactics that we focus on. I just want to run through these, that every year I set these with Kevin, and these are the major focuses across our buildings. This drives what we do in our buildings, at the building level. But we're focusing on student achievement again, as we always do every year. We continue to implement our multi-tiered systems of support framework. That is the framework to support kids that are struggling in school. We are, we are heavy, heavy into new high school career tech education programming. I'll be coming in the next couple months with more updates about that. And we're launching, we launched Construction One here last week, and we'll be launching all the other programs in a year from now. So a lot of work going on in that area. And then I call it the traditional work, curriculum review cycle work. We are busy starting a formal review of our math curriculum because there's new academic standards coming over the math. And then in K-12 social studies, we're embedding, it is the new, the most recent, 2021 academic standards and social studies into our courses and social studies. And then the Read Act continues this year, and the main focus is that we're training our professional professionals. And they are required to complete eight hours of literacy training.
And the goal of the Read Act is that every student is reading that grade level, right?
Every year.
Third grade, seventh grade, eighth grade.
Correct, correct, correct. So that will continue on. And then this one, you know, you know, it's kind of came out of the blue like a year and a half ago, and here we are. That we are, we are studying the impact, we're studying and researching how best to embrace artificial intelligence into our teaching, into our instruction, thinking about parameters and thinking about guidelines for both students and teachers. And that's ongoing, but we take it again very methodically, very thoughtfully. And we'll be updating and coming up with guidance on that later this year. But just wanted to know that we are tackling that. So, so a lot of things happening, a lot of exciting things happening here in the district, and I'll keep updating you.
Thanks for all you do.
So I wanted, it's always fun on this day. We had the first day of school. For some of us, that seems very close by with our kids, and some of us, it's a reflection point of where our kids were, and you think of those memories. But it's, you know, you get over the summer and you're doing a lot of work of planning for the next school year. And when August starts turning around, you just want to back. I mean, you're, you're putting planning into action, and you just want to see those spaces back in the building and the energy. And when we look at it, we just wanted to give you some of these pictures because I think all of what our student rep report or what Mark's report comes, these are the sights, and you can hear the sounds almost through the pictures of, of just learning and action. And so our early learning teachers are getting to know their new, new students. And you go to Shirley Hills, and if you remember the first day on Tuesday, that rain came absolutely at one of the worst times. And it wasn't, it wasn't just a little bit. I mean, it decided to really come. And so when we were thinking about the bus stop, and the only good thing, it was the first day of school, so a lot of parents were.
And so when we were thinking about the bus stop and the only good thing, it was the first day of school, so a lot of parents were there with their kids and but there were some wet ones and you can just look at how we're greeting the bus line there in the middle of the downpour. But again, nothing could really rain on that day and welcome them in. And over at Hilltop, you can just see different pictures of our staff coming together and some kids seeing friends that maybe they didn't see over the school year and getting back into the routine of classroom. You get into the middle school and you start seeing some of these students in the middle picture there. You can see them uh already using the media center space. And I'm excited about that. And then finally, at the high school, uh, you know, I, I just feel, I feel really blessed that our staff and our students of how, how they are, one, really excited about the future of this building and how they're working through the change that our building's going through and how they work together in that process. Uh, I just am, I couldn't be more proud of everyone's effort in that pursuit. And so it's a, it's a start of another year and we're excited for the programming to begin. We're excited about the energy that begins early in the morning and then late at night and the weekends. And you try to find an empty parking spot up at this place right now and it is packed and there's a lot going on. And I want to just say to you as a board, um, thanks for representing our community of allowing us to be that engaging source where it's activities and it's these spaces that are coming in and there's that joy. And also some of those challenges that we have the opportunity to take on and be able to help the families and the community in educating our kids. And so I, um, I feel like it's one of the greatest blessings of our work is these faces and these stories and that responsibility of bringing that forward. And so thank you for that. Uh, you heard an update about academics, you heard an update about construction. Uh, we just got done with our field audit and that will be scheduled to come before you, uh, October twentieth. And so we'll look forward to bringing that forward. Uh, today you take an action on the preliminary levy. Uh, the state is working on getting those preliminary results to us yet. Uh, part of that reason, we'll ask you again, like you do every year, to approve that at maximum. And then you'll set that rate at the December meeting. And so we will get those numbers shortly from the state. That allows us to continue to engage with our finance committee and that'll allow us to engage with the board as a whole of how we go forward with that. You see in your action items, a couple of items having to do with staffing. Uh, really nice, uh, beginning enrollment numbers in the district. And so kindergarten numbers are well above what the projection would be. And I would say grades in general look really solid. And so I think, um, we settle in that more when we get to October. Uh, to give you an accurate number, there's some students that, uh, have changed other districts. There's new students here. And so when that flow is, but uh we have a good feeling of just where we were the first week of some really good numbers, uh, for the board there. So some of the staffing changes that you see are related to that. You have a kitchen position. Uh, one action item you have is on obsolete equipment. It's just a continued reminder that when technology or other things, uh, have served their purpose here, we try to find the best value that we can and we put that up. And in that process, we have you approve that list and then we, we make those sales. Lastly, I would say with the board election, part of that process is for you to approve the election judges so that election process will occur. And so you have an action item about that. One other item was food service program fees and there's the fees for the lunch this year. So again, the state is offering uh free breakfast, free lunch for our students, but adults obviously have to pay. And then if you get a second lunch, it could be a fee, et cetera. And so that's how those fees apply. One thing that was really nice, you, you heard about the cold temps. Uh, we, we were blessed as we were working with some of, connecting with our air conditioning at the high school, that it was cooler, that we could bring in natural air. Who would think that it was really cold natural air that we, we, uh, we, we didn't, we were worried they were going to be really hot that first week and instead we're bringing in a lot of nighttime air only to say it can get quite cool with just nighttime air. Uh, so we're working through some of those processes with heating and cooling, et cetera. Uh, last statement I would make is you, I've sent out communication to our community about the safety and the well-being of our students. And that is a responsibility that we share with our parents and make sure that we can do the processes of training and securing our building and make sure that we're good at communicating and when we see kids in need of help, that we work together and how we can help our kids. But obviously, uh, that's a time of sorrow when you see such a tragedy impact a community and you just wrap your arms around and everyone feels vulnerable most times. And there's a lot of sensitivity to it. And the way that we try to move forward is really centered on what are your commitments? And our commitments are that we have a plan, we have strong operation systems, we value our relationships. We try to give help with those that we need help and we really, really promote excellent communication from our students, from our parents and from our staff so that we can collaborate the best that we can. And as danger will always be a concern for us, as it is in any community, we have to, um, we have to really invest in those systems. And you have to show that care for one another. And so can't get through this report without at least acknowledging, but bringing it back full circle. Uh, it is, uh, as you talk about heavy topics, nothing lifts you up more than the energy that the students bring again that day. And one thing that we feel very blessed for our staff is our students feel safe in our schools. When we survey them, that is something that they feel this is the place that they want to be. You see that in attendance numbers, you see that in academic performance, you see that in survey. And I would just say to you, thank you for leading a district that allows those kind of results. So it was a, it was a great school start. It was different with construction. But otherwise, there was a lot of familiarity with it and we're off to another good year. So thank you.
Chair moves for approval of the consent agenda to the second. All in favor? Both? Motion carries. Move on to our discussion items. Chair moves for approval of action item eight A, approval of certification of the twenty twenty five payable twenty twenty six preliminary property tax levy. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item eight B, approval of the obsolete equipment to be sold or recycled. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item eight C, approval of election judges for November fourth, twenty twenty five general election. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item eight D, approval of adult staff food service program fees for twenty five, twenty six school year. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item eight E, approval of additional two point five six F T E educational paraprofessional kindergarten positions at Hilltop Primary School. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item eight F, approval to update A R of four, two, three, one. Um, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The chair moves for approval of action item eight G, approval of additional point five three F T E kitchen assistant position and elimination of a point five three F T E kitchen assistant two position. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, is there anything anybody else needs to bring up at this time?
I'm just going to invite everybody. So my fifty year reunion is this weekend. And we are beginning at three thirty Friday with a tour of the high school. And so if you want to come to a tour of the high school, um, three thirty, we'll start in the performing arts center and get an overview of what has happened in the school district that you already know and then, um, and then we'll take you on a tour. So I hope it's okay that I invite.
Of course.
Yeah. They're talking about bringing eggs and tomatoes to throw at the super gym and work for changing the name, but otherwise it's gonna take a long time.
However, we can lead them through that process.
Sounds like a good party. Yeah, yeah, well, it's exciting, fifty years, exciting. Please know that you're not getting this school for nothing.
Thank you, Art. If nothing else, uh, the chair moves for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good week, everybody.